Tonight, the order of business is going to be that Ms. Margie Van Deven, who is the Deputy Commissioner for Learning Services, is going to present a summary of the main points of many of the plans and other submissions that have been sent to the department in recent weeks. Our goal is to determine what is the appropriate role for the state in providing support for, and if necessary, intervention in unaccredited school districts. We're all here this evening, of course, because that question applies very directly to the Kansas City Public Schools, and we're anxious to hear from all of the Kansas City School District constituents so that we can develop a plan that represents your best thinking along with that of your colleagues and neighbors. We also encourage you through the presentation to record your comments as we go through. Margie will give you a few more directions about that. But we are so anxious to hear from all of you. We will try to spend as much time as possible recording that input and that feedback, and we'll look forward to having further engagement with you in the future. I would like to take a moment to introduce Board Member Charlie Shields, who is here with us this evening. We also have two nominees to the State Board of Education, who we're hoping will be confirmed soon. One of those is Dr. Vic Lenz, who is also here, and Dr. John Martin. Again, thank you for your presence. At this time, I'd like to introduce Margie Van Deven.
Thank you, Commissioner, and good evening to each of you. I am going to begin with a brief presentation that does capture a summary of the individual plans that we have received. I will move through these slides relatively quickly, not to rush the presentation, but just to ensure that we have sufficient time to hear from many of you during the public comment period. To begin, the purpose, as the Commissioner mentioned, is to provide an overview of each submitted plan to help inform feedback. This is not about comparing the plans that were received. This is about presenting different concepts, different ideas, and we're asking that you complete this feedback form as we go through the presentation because it breaks it out into concept area and really tell us what do you like, what don't you like, again, about the specific concepts that will be addressed this evening. So, why are we doing this at this point in time? And I think it's really important to remind us of the passage of Senate Bill 125 that did go into effect in August of this year, or last year, actually. And so, just to make it clear that under the previous law, the State Board of Education had three options in an unaccredited school district, and that was to replace the elected board with a special administrative board, attach the district to another district, or divide the district and assign it to adjoining districts. Now, again, it's important to remember with the passage of Senate Bill 125, the State Board still does have each of these three options, but they also have an additional option. Quite frankly, some of these that we have tried before have not been as successful as we would like to have seen them. In some cases, they've shown some improvements, but we're also looking for what are some other options that the State Board could do if necessary. The other component that Senate Bill 125 provided with the State Board of Education is that it changed the timeline. If you were familiar with the previous law, there was a fixed, set, two-year window of when the state could intervene if the district lapsed. This allows for either immediate intervention, two-year intervention, three-year intervention. It really just depends on the need, and that's why that key term "if necessary" is really important to point out. So, that is the question that the State Board asked. What is the appropriate role for the state in supporting and, if necessary, intervening in unaccredited school districts? And that's where we really need your assistance. When we called on the plans, we asked for five basic components to be addressed. The first, access. It's really critical that every child have access to a high-quality education. The second, collective responsibility. This is not just an unaccredited school district issue. This is an issue for the entire state of Missouri. The third, choice. We knew the issue of choice needed to be addressed somehow in these plans because that is a question that is up for continuous debate, and we'd like your feedback on that. The fourth is we need to make sure that whatever plan we put in place focuses on the needs of children and their families. And the fifth is urgency. Now, why the urgency? After decades of school improvement efforts, the Missouri achievement gap is still growing. And if you look at our data from the past 10 years, you will see that between the free and reduced-priced lunch and the non-free and reduced-priced lunch, between the black, between the white, between the Hispanic, between the white, and we really need to address that with all deep sincerity. The second is that over 62,000 Missouri students are currently enrolled in provisional or unaccredited districts. And the third is that in our unaccredited school districts, the average proficiency rate is less than 30%, and that's in all four content areas. If you look at science, social studies, English language arts, and math, the range is anywhere between 23% and 27%, and none of us are satisfied with that. The fourth is that simply all schools are not preparing our students to graduate college in career ready. Finally, the impending bankruptcy of our unaccredited districts makes the development of a plan imperative. So, we've received six plans to date. The Superintendent's Plan, the Missouri Charter Public School Association with the Children's Education Alliance of Missouri, the SEEM Group, and C Trust were all plans that were submitted about state intervention. The Normandy School Improvement and the Riverview Gardens School Improvement were focused mainly on regaining accreditation, and the Kansas City School Improvement does work at re-accrediting the school district, but also looks at different roles for state intervention as well. So, really quick summary of the Superintendent's Plan, what's included in that. They discuss developing a statewide network for unaccredited schools, stresses local control as the foundation of strong communities, emphasizes early intervention with a real emphasis on the early component. It focuses on schools rather than districts, which is a different approach for the state, and it emphasizes spending on instruction rather than transportation. For the Charter Association and the SEEM Plan, they also talk about developing a statewide network for unaccredited schools. It looks a little bit different than the Superintendent's Plan if you get into depth and look at that. But it does, too, focus on one school at a time, one neighborhood at a time. The C Trust Plan speaks specifically to creating a community school's office that would serve as its own local education agency. It would contract with nonprofit school operators for individual schools. It provides autonomy at the school level for principals, teachers, and parents. They propose providing access to high-quality education in each neighborhood and providing transportation to each of the neighborhood schools. And they also propose establishing community-based advisory boards for the community school's office and each contracted school. For the district improvement plans, again, their focus is mainly on regaining the district's accreditation. Now, to be clear, these are just very general overviews of the plans. If you need to, we would really appreciate you going and reading each of the plans in depth. They are posted on our website. And again, to focus on the best concepts from each plan, please fill out a form this evening and return it to us tonight, or take some time and feel free to do that on our website. There's a place for you to go and to fill out your comments on our website. So, let's go through each of those five components. Access to quality education. We've included in that governance, finance, and educator quality. For governance, the Superintendent's Plan proposes maintaining the district and elected board for the high-performing schools, but establishing a statewide achievement school district for low-performing schools. In that situation, the department would hire a school improvement director, and the low-performing schools can be operated through options, including a state-appointed board or control with the surrounding district. It also adds a classification level called academically stressed. The Charter School SEEM Plan, they propose creating a statewide Missouri Opportunity District that would employ a CEO. And this CEO would be appointed by the governor and would be confirmed by the Senate. The CEO would establish the advisory board. The CEO would report annually to the State Board of Education and annually to the Joint Committee of Education. For the C Trust Plan, the C Trust Plan suggests appointing an executive director for the community school's office, which would be reporting to and appointed by the Commissioner of Education. An advisory board for the community school's office would be appointed by the State Board of Education. And then, nonprofit school operators would be put into place, and a board of local educators, parents, and community members would be in place for each of those neighborhood schools. For the Normandy Plan, they talk about their current elected board. Riverview Gardens talk about their current special administrative board. Kansas City talks about their current elected board, but also proposes establishing for each school a school improvement advisory committee. Then, we get to finance. For finance, our Superintendent's Plan talks about a continuation of the current transfer for students that are already participating in the transfer situation. If that should occur, a categorical funding line would need to be appropriated by the Missouri General Assembly. Local, state, and federal funding would follow the child. For the Charter School and SEEM Plan, they're proposing that the Opportunity District would receive 1.5% of the charter school state funds, which is typical for the charter schools currently. But they're also asking for authority to issue general obligation bonds. Funding becomes a line item in the state budget, and local, state, and federal funding follows the child. For the C Trust Plan, the primary budget functions shift from your central office to your school level. The school operators control in the aggregate of 65% of the funds. And as you may be aware, the C Trust Fund Plan was specifically looking at the Kansas City School District, in which they proposed that 5% are being currently operated at the school level. They also proposed that transportation and facilities would remain this responsibility of the community school's office. They proposed that a community school's fund would be put together that would aggregate funding to support each of the schools, that real allocates funding to provide universal access to preschool, and local, state, and federal funding would follow the child. For the Normandy and Riverview School Plans, they do not address finance. Kansas City does speak to reallocation of resources. Improving teacher and leader quality. The Superintendent's Plan does not immediately address this. The Charter School Plan references opportunities for innovation. The C Trust Plan talks about empowering the school operators and principals to run the schools, increases hiring and compensation flexibility, provides training and resources for teachers, and allows educators to collectively bargain at the school level, so the school would determine that choice. The Normandy School Improvement Plan talks about providing training and support for all teachers and staff and recruiting highly qualified staff. Riverview Gardens talks about using instructional coaches to provide job-embedded professional development and with a special emphasis on increasing rigor and relevance. And the Kansas City School Improvement Plan talks about using comprehensive feedback in their evaluation system and increasing mandatory professional development. For collective responsibility, who's accountable? How do we get parents and community members involved? Superintendent's, they talk about interventions beginning in a district that earns less than 70% on the annual performance report. At that point, individual schools would be classified in the district and adds a classification level of academically stressed at the district level, but maintains unaccredited at the level for schools. So, in an academically stressed district, or one that has less than 70% on the APR, the unaccredited schools are placed in the statewide school improvement district. The APRs are then generated for the unaccredited schools, and the accountability is applied to the achievement district, not the school district in which the school is located. And the academically stressed district maintains accountability for all the remaining schools in that district. For the Charter School SEEM Plan, the interventions begin with the lowest 5% of schools statewide, so they propose accrediting all schools in the state and then looking at the percentage of points earned on the annual performance report and finding out the lowest 5%, placing them into the Missouri School Opportunity District. And then, the data for the underperforming schools would start with year one in that new Missouri Opportunity District. Sorry. The C Trust Plan talks about interventions beginning when the district is formally classified as unaccredited and found in need of state intervention. Individual schools and the community school's office would receive an annual performance report, but accountability benchmarks would be dictated by the performance agreement between the school operator and the CSO, or the community school's office. For Normandy, they have established district-wide annual targets to regain accreditation. The same in Riverview Gardens. However, Riverview Gardens also speaks to having no students score below basic on the map and also decreasing discipline referrals. Kansas City School Improvement talks about the accountability being monitored and enforced at the district level. It speaks to a team of Kansas City Public School employees with cooperating school district of the greater Kansas City and the Regional Professional Development Center of Kansas City would monitor that performance. It defines four levels of school accreditation, and if an academically stressed school does not demonstrate academic improvement within three years, then the Kansas City Public School District would recommend to the State Board of Education that the school would be designated as lapsed. At that point, the lapsed school would be reconstituted or closed, and then the students would be transferred to an accredited school within the district, and those decisions would be determined by the district. Test scores are not included in the receiving annual performance report for one year. Parental involvement in the Superintendent's Plan. It does seek parental involvement and input into the Achievement District School Level Improvement Plan. The Charter School SEEM Plan talks about representation on an advisory board. C Trust talks about representation on the local school board and provides choice among diverse schooling options. The Normandy School Improvement Plan talks about involving parents in district governance and informing and involving stakeholders in district educational programs. Riverview Gardens does not specifically address parental involvement. Kansas City speaks to establishing a parent and family resource center in each school and builds a family advocate and parent liaison in each school. For community involvement, Superintendent's Plan does not immediately address this. The Charter School Plan talks about representation on the advisory board. The C Trust Plan recommends a community school's fund outside of the actual system. Normandy School Improvement talks about providing representation in district governance and informs and involves stakeholders in the district's educational programs. Riverview Gardens does not specifically address this. Kansas City speaks to creating or expanding community schools with services housed within the local school. It talks about providing professional development for community partners working with students outside the typical school day. School choice. The Superintendent's Plan calls for a new term academically stressed district, which would not be subject to the student transfer law. Students in unaccredited schools within a district earning less than 70% on the annual performance report may transfer to an accredited school within the district if there is an accredited school available and if there is room. Students who participated in the transfer program during 2013, 2014 are able to continue participation as long as they do not move out of that district or change schools, and they may remain there until the student graduates. The Charter School Plan talks about, in addition to maintaining the transfer options, that other school options would also be included. Those do include different components of chartering, and they also talk about access to private schools. Okay, C Trust. The community school's office would not be subject to accreditation or student transfers. The students would have access to any public school in the district as well as access to transportation services that would allow them to attend any public school within that LEA. Normandy discusses the impact of the transfer issue. Riverview Gardens does not address this. Kansas City talks about providing the state authority to lapse a school, which is new authority, and talks about moving students from the lapsed school to a different school within the district with those decisions being made by the district. Okay, so focusing on needs of children and family, these supports, and this is very much so condensed because there are very different directions that some of the supports discuss in these plans. The Superintendent's Plan, they talk about the status based on accreditation level with a focus on early intervention at individual schools. Again, getting in there early. The review team would be established by the State Department, and state reviews would be held for any school or district within Level 2. Early learning was not specifically addressed, and the wraparound services were not specifically addressed. And when we're talking about wraparound services, those, too, are things such as health services or other things that you might not see in a typical educational environment. For the Charter School and the SEEM Plan. Yes, sorry, lost my spot. For the Charter School and the SEEM Plan, it begins with the bottom 5% of schools eligible to be assigned to that Missouri Opportunity District. Early learning is not specifically addressed. Wraparound services are addressed through the type of authorizer, so they look different from each building. The review team is not specifically addressed. C Trust creates conditions for success in unaccredited districts. Early learning talks about reallocating funds for preschool for all District 3 and 4-year-old students. Talks about establishing a transition authority for year one. They talk about a year zero to make a smoother transition. They talk about establishing a community school's fund. The wraparound services are addressed through the type of operator, focusing on local autonomy. And a review team is conducted through the community school office with their performance agreements. The Normandy School District does not specifically talk about early learning. There is a focus on science, technology, engineering, and math, the focus on the literacy program, use of technology for teaching and learning, and data to inform practices. The review team is not specifically addressed. For the Riverview Gardens School Improvement, early learning is not specifically addressed. They do focus on professional development. The review team is not specifically addressed. Kansas City School Improvement talks about early learning, references enhancing early childhood programs, speaks to multiple options for intervention. A review team, as I referenced earlier, would be put together with representation from the Kansas City Public Schools, the cooperating school districts of the greater Kansas City area, and the Regional Professional Development Center. So, the final piece here, urgency. What does this implementation timeline look like? For the Superintendent's, there's a multi-year transition process that they believe could be implemented immediately. If a Level 2 district does not show growth within five years, the district would be designated as Level 3 academically stressed, and the actions defined for that level are taken. For Level 3 academically stressed, and again, you could either start there or get there. All unaccredited buildings are assigned to the achievement school district, and the APR determines whether or when the achievement district transfers control of the school back to the school district. Level 4 is lapsed. For the Charter Association and the SEEM Plan, the CEO would be appointed by the governor, and this would be fulfilled no later than March 15th of 2015. And then, provisionally accredited schools would have three years to regain accreditation, or they would become unaccredited. C Trust is a multi-year transition beginning in the fall of 2014, includes a year zero with specific assignments during that year, and then speaks to year 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Normandy School Improvement, they talk about implementation in the fall of 2013, again, with targets to regain accreditation. Implementation is underway. Riverview Gardens, the same thing. They're working on regaining accreditation. Implementation is underway. Kansas City, they are requesting immediate designation for provisional accreditation. They speak to individual accreditation of each school commencing in May of 2014. With that Level 4 academically stressed school unable to demonstrate academic improvement within three years would be designated as lapsed. So, again, we ask you, quick summary there. Please take the time to try to get your thoughts down. What do you like? What do you not like? You can either capture that on your forms tonight, submit it to us as you leave, or you may, again, provide it at this website. There's a place for you to complete that. Thank you for your attention. At this point in time, we'd like to move to the public hearing component. I'd just like to go quickly through the way that we've structured this so that this can move as smoothly as possible. You'll see we have two mics available for you, so please go to the one that is the closest if your name is called. So, we need to make sure if you have completed a speaker card, that's the bright yellow cards, and that has not been collected, please raise that right now so that we make sure we have everybody's cards. There's some back there. If your name is called, we will draw these randomly. If your name is called, we ask you to proceed immediately to the microphone in front of the room. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, and we will have our timekeepers that will help you keep track by providing a one-minute warning. When you see the one-minute sign raised, we ask that you please move to your concluding remarks. Audience members are asked to permit each speaker to present without interruption. Applause or other distraction during the speaker's presentation will be counted as part of the speaker's time. Any speaker who runs out of time will be invited to discontinue and to submit comments in writing or an email. And the final speaker will be called no later than 7:50 to allow for a full five minutes of comment and closing remarks. Another reminder, all comments, verbal and written, become a part of public record and may be posted on the department's website verbatim. Another part that I wanted to add is if you have questions for this evening, please write them either in the spot for Other. There's a place there where you can provide your questions. Or if you need to turn it over, you may turn the page over to ask your questions. We will post the questions as written and the answers on our website as well. Okay? With that, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Cooper and Dr. Langford, who will begin by drawing our names.
These young people out front have drawn our first three names. Preston Jenkins, followed by Lakeisha Allen, followed by Patrick Bastos.
I didn't expect to be first. One thing I listened to, they were saying this is a commitment not only just for the Kansas City Missouri School District. I had an opportunity to go and speak with William Ratliff down in Jepson City on the Community Reinvestment Act. And I feel that the Kansas City Missouri School District and all these surrounding school districts need to address these issues with the Civic Council, the Downtown Rotary Club. All these people need to be at the table when we're addressing these issues because most of the money that's coming out of the community is coming through the banking association. And most of those members that's in the Civic Council, the Downtown Rotary Club, sit on these bank boards. So, what I'm saying is that this is a collective issue we need to deal with. I mean, our children are suffering because of this. And we need leaders that's going to basically address these concerns. And when you have people that's scared to speak up, and I'm not scared because it's around, all these people saying they don't want our kids coming to their schools, then they need to address these issues with the banking association who are transferring these bonds out of our community into their communities and their schools. So, I'd just say that far as they concerned with taking over the school district, they should sit down and talk to the Civic Council, the Downtown Rotary Club, and all these different organizations that sit on these bank boards. And I expressed these issues with William Ratliff. But I'm not going to bite my tongue because they know everybody that's hollering they don't want our kids. My son is in the school district. He does pretty good, but the bottom line is the Kansas City Missouri School District don't even have a computer link up. don't even have a computer link up. All these other schools got softwares in their schools. We don't even have that. But, we need leadership that's going to address these concerns. And I'm not going to continually speak on this, because until we deal with the bond issue and how money is being transferred through these banks out of our community into these more affluent areas, we're going to continually have these problems. And we need leaders that's going to be on the school board, that's going to go downtown, sit down and talk to these people and address these concerns, and not be scared. Now, if it take a community leader, I mean, a community activist to get up and say this because we got people that's basically living in high society and scared to address these concerns, then I'll address it. Because God's going to hold me accountable, and because I'm a Christian, I'm going to stand up and tell what God tells me to say.
Hello. I agree with him. I agree that the children are suffering. I have two elementary children that are part of the Kansas City District. And what I've noticed, I'm very involved, and what I noticed is that you have a lot of educators, part of the district, that don't want to be there. That's the biggest problem to me. And as a parent, I expect the superintendent and everybody downtown should be responsible for who they hire, who comes into these schools, the counselors, the lunch lady, the janitor, whoever. You know, these kids are suffering. They're treated like they're adults. They're not adults. You know, if you have a problem with that child, if you have a problem with the child, you need to discuss that with the parent, and not scold that child. Like my grandmother always said, they're mischievous. They don't know no better. And we as parents, we have a responsibility, and the educators have a responsibility. And like I said, the people downtown, y'all have college degrees, and the people, the state of Missouri have college degrees. Y'all need to work something out. Y'all need to work something out.
Patrick?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Bustos. I've been a parent in the district for about 13 years. My children have received a wonderful education, and my daughter's also receiving an excellent education. She's a junior this year. It's unfortunate that we're at this place, because in my heart, I really believe that this district has earned accreditation. And it's unfortunate... It's unfortunate that we have not been given what we've earned. And it's... But I also think that we have some work to do, and I believe the district and the administration of Kansas City Public Schools has come up with a good starting point. It's a no-brainer. We want to do for ourselves. We want to bring our district and all the students in the district up to where we need to be. We have some work to do, but I think we've got a good start, and we have a good plan. If the state board is really interested, what they need to do is get on board with us. Please, in your infinite wisdom, realize that these are our children. This is our district. This is our community. We want your help, but we want to do it. We have a plan to do it, and we can do it. So, please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Next, we have Lon Swerengen, followed by Shalon Sanders-Brooks. Let me announce one more here. We're picking another. Scott Siavelo. Siavelo?
I've taught in this district. One of my daughters graduated from Central High School and learned things that needed to be learned. The idea is, is we need to keep public schools here. We need to keep public in education. This is the problem. We don't want to take and privatize so others can make money off of us. The idea is, we need help from finances that the state doesn't do. And we've lost more money through this issue or that issue. We'll train this way. We'll do that. We won't do this. The idea is, let us do the right thing and make us proud to be here, rather than having some outside group do nothing but take away from us.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Sanders-Brooks. I'm a resident of this city. I'm a property owner of this city, and I have volunteered within this Kansas City Missouri School District for years and years and years until ACE was destroyed. My comment is, it's criminal to have our children have the kind of education they are getting. It is criminal to have our children have the kind of education they are getting. Not my words, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s words, 1966, as he looked at the condition of the public schools in Chicago. I will address two of the plans that I have read, the CEE Trust Plan and the Kansas City Missouri District Plan. I have problems regarding the way the contract was awarded, which I will not elaborate at this time period. What I will say, the team that was utilized, and I met with them, was not diverse. You brought in outsiders that had no knowledge of this community whatsoever. There are educational experts that have experience in urban education, and they were not included, nor were their plans and their successful schools examined. There's three schools that I refer to and educators that have succeeded. The schools in Chicago were not examined. They have 100% graduate placement rate in all male high schools. They were not examined. Dr. Steve Perry's Charter School, 100% graduate placement, all free and reduced lunch-eligible students. Those would have been similarities. Dr. Steve Perry, parent of a 16-year-old mother. So, not only does he know it by studying, but he lived the life. What I am saying, that plan is very flawed in many ways, and it has some positive aspects. But when you start out with a team that is not culturally sensitive, the plan does not even discuss vocational education. And I said that too, the gentleman. I said, "You don't even address vocational education." The unions say they can't hire young people because they can't pass the written test. There are young people that would love to go into the trades in this city and have good-paying jobs. Not everyone wants a four-year education. But you have no concept discussing vocational education, nor did I see it in the plan that was presented to me by the school district. There are other shortcomings in the plan, reducing local control. And I have a question. When do you address whether those individuals that will be appointed have to live in this district? Will they even have to be residents of the state of Missouri? I served on the Elementary and Education Committee in the state. I inserted into the charter language that if you were going to be on the charter board, you had to be a resident in Missouri, because at one point, the board chairman had moved out of the state, and no one knew it. Fraud was... Occurred at that charter school. So, there are basic things that are not even addressed in these plans, and I yield my time back, but it's about the children. If we know that there are supposedly, according to their data, 7,000 children that would be eligible for pre-K, why are we currently only not at 3,000 that are eligible and receiving pre-K, when we all know that education starts in the womb before they're born? And it's so critical that they have a quality pre-education before they step in the schoolhouse door.
Scott?
Thank you. With your indulgence, I'd like to have Andrea Flinders, President of Local 691. I yield my time to her.
Good evening. Tonight, my remarks are basically focused on the state board and also to Desi. You have several plans in front of you right now, and you're probably going to have a few more. And there's good things and there's bad things in many of those plans. But the one thing I want you to do is, as you look at those plans, I want you to ask yourself two questions and make sure you have the answers to those questions. The first question I want you to ask yourself as you're looking at these plans, is it really meeting the needs of our children? And if you think it is, then the second question I want you to ask yourself and have an answer to is, how do you know? Is it proven? Is it research-based? Is it best proven, based on best practices? How do you know that that plan is really going to meet the needs of our children? We have in Kansas City people that often say, "We have failing schools." I hear it all the time, and every time I hear them say failing schools, I do my best to correct it. Our schools are not failing. Our children are learning. Our teachers are teaching. And they're teaching with children that have many, many challenges. 90% of our children live in poverty. 24% are English-language learners. Just about as many are homeless. So, when they walk into that classroom, they're not walking into the classroom always ready to learn. Many times, they come in hungry. They come from homes that have no books. They come from homes where the adults have priorities other than education, where they're trying to survive day by day. I looked at these plans, and it concerns me that we have people that think that our children are failures when they're not. I cannot speak passionately enough about the work that people do in our schools. Every day, our teachers, our school-related personnel, our principals are under tremendous pressure to help our children, but they need the programs and the services to help them. I hope that whatever plan you look at is a plan that truly addresses the needs of our children, that it truly picks the programs, the services, that are going to target our kids' needs and then address them. So, make sure you answer those two questions. What do our children need? How do you know it's going to be effective? Thank you.
Our next two speakers are John Sharp, followed by Mark Boudant. John Sharp?
Thank you very much. I'm John Sharp. I'm a city councilman from Kansas City. Formerly served 10 years on the Missouri House Education Committee and two terms on Hickman Mills School Board. I'm speaking as an individual. First, I'd like to say, for state officials to criticize the results of local education and ask why it's not more successful, they might want to look in the mirror for the answer. Missouri has never fully funded public education like it should, and the funding for public education is not distributed fairly, because the formula does not adequately recognize the higher costs of education in urban areas. It does not adequately recognize the higher costs of educating children who are English-language learners. It does not recognize adequately the higher costs of recognizing children from impoverished backgrounds who don't have the same access to educational resources more wealthy families do. Secondly, one of the major concerns, and one of the things that has hurt the Kansas City School District besides inadequate state funding and inadequate state support, is there's been instability in the district. There's been a revolving door on superintendents. There's been a revolving door on the school board. And now, now today, when we have stability, the biggest threat to stability is coming from the state. Now, I don't agree with every decision the board's made, but I think we've got a board that is working with the superintendent, that is setting policy, that's not micromanaging, that's not interfering. We've got a superintendent that's committed. The district earned provisional accreditation. It should get provisional accreditation, and the state should not keep moving the goalposts. The district looks forward to working with the state and the officials that you have designated in the past to help the district. People like Tony Stansberry, that I think is universally supported and admired for his career in public education, help the district, don't destroy the district. The transfer plan that's the law now would be devastating to the Kansas City School District economically, because not only would it have to pay for transfers of its existing students, it would have to pay for transfers of any school-aged child in the district, whether they went to Kansas City Public Schools or private schools. It would bankrupt the district. It would cause an influx to our surrounding districts that would threaten the education that they provide. It's a lose-lose proposition. Instead, help the district. We don't need for the students in the Kansas City Public Schools to be lab rats in a great experiment to see... To turn an urban district into a charter school district and see if it works. The district is making progress. It's got stable leadership. Work with it. And I... One of the other things that has always troubled me is, I think years ago, many in the civic and business community in Kansas City gave up on the Kansas City District. And they just quit helping. They quit getting involved. They need to get re-involved, not to try to destroy the district and replace it with some experiment, but get involved with the schools again. Every public school in Kansas City should be adopted by some group, whether it be a business, a church, a civic group, a neighborhood organization, to provide mentors, to provide support that the district can't afford. And I think I've seen people come together in this community to support the district and to support a plan that will help our kids and not destroy the district like I've never seen before. Suburban superintendents, the Kansas City Superintendent and Board, the NAACP, faith-based groups like CCO, Communities Creating Opportunities, Moore Squared, Metropolitan Organization for Racial and Economic Equality. They've all come together to support and work with the district. We want the state board to work with us too, not turn their back on us, not try to destroy us and create something new, but support us. Thank you.
Mark Boudant?
I don't like having to follow him. My name's Mark. I've had kids in the Kansas City School District now for 27 years. My youngest son is a junior at Lincoln Prep. To the very first guy who spoke tonight, if you go to board meetings and there are people there who don't want your kids in their schools, they don't know your kids. people there who don't want your kids in their schools, they don't know your kids. I've had that opportunity, and in my neighborhood, it's rare, but it's been great for my kids, and they wouldn't want to go to any of the grade schools other than the ones they went to were the high school. They go to Lincoln Prep, but they wouldn't want to go anywhere else. And they had the choice, and they made the decision, and they're all happy they did. We have a lot of plans here, but one of the things Mr. Sharp mentioned is, this school district, for the 27 years I've been going on and off to school board meetings, has been victimized by a rotating band of superintendents who came here to do something. They brought in their consultants. Everybody made money. Everybody's gone. Nothing really changed, except somebody made a lot of money in the process. And those people aren't in this room, probably. There are vacant buildings that consultants decided to build that are standing vacant all over the city. You've got the old Jewish Community Center on homes that they spent, I think, $60 million taking asbestos out of before they figured out that the halls were too narrow to have middle school students stuck together in. We've all been victimized by a rotating band of superintendents, their consultants, and carpetbaggers who come into this district to bring in their change, take their money, and leave. And I think for the first time, the current administration, we have a superintendent who wants to be here, who's committed to staying here. He knows what he's here to do. He didn't bring in 50 consultants with their hands out, waiting for us to open our wallets. He believes in our kids. He believes in the people there. I've seen the changes in my kid's school. There are better teachers. Some of the lesser teachers are gone. You've got a union who is allowing that kind of transition and improvement in the working people in our schools to take place. We've got the first stability in 30 years in this district. And because it's an elected school board, it's the people who vote for the school board who helped initiate that change. And I think it took us a long time to not vote for the next big guy with the big idea and the big consultants and have what was been referred to as us doing it ourselves, but everybody doing it in this community. But we really have the first success and the first stability that we've had in 27 years. I've been a Boy Scout leader. I've been a church leader. I'm a parent. Kids need stability, and they benefit from it, and they feed from it. Families need it, and communities need it, and we finally have some semblance of it building here. I think we've got momentum, and I'm begging you to please let us see it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next two speakers are Ann Pritchett and Faith Oliver. Ann Pritchett, followed by Faith Oliver.
Good evening. My name is Faith Oliver. I am a former teacher and counselor for the Kansas City Public School System. I integrated this school as an educator, coming from Robert E. Lee of Oklahoma. I'm an OSU student, and I feel strong about what I'm fixing to talk about or what I'm going to talk about. Pardon me, it's not fixing to, but going to talk about. Now, here's what's happening. We have an economic situation. There are seven ways that children learn. Seven. And our counselors in our school system, they know this. But we know that there is something going on because our kids can even finish college with As in their college classes and cannot get a job due to testing. I don't know who we are paying for testing, whether they are going to college or finishing college. It's called the praxis test, people. You can finish college with an A, a four-point, and you can't get a job because of tests. When I came through, you all knew we had a test called the Hour Basic Skills Test. How many of you remember it? How many of you had problems with it? Okay? Some of you are successful people, although you did not pass that Hour Basic Skills Test. Some of you are going to be successful whether or not you pass the praxis test. Some of you are going to be successful whether or not you go to church or not. And I'm a Methodist preacher's kid. God help those who help themselves, and we know this. Okay? You learned that last Sunday, didn't you? Okay. Now, what I'm saying is, we need to stop playing with each other and our children. The thing is, testing is fine, but we need to stop binding to testing companies. This doesn't say what I knew or what I've learned. You, kids can go to college, and you know what they do? If they don't pass the entrance exam, and I know because I have been a counselor in this district, if they don't pass the entrance exam, you take extra classes. You stay in college forever. You have a large student loan to pay when you finish and still might not get a job because of a test. Who's behind all this testing? I'd hate to think that the teachers that taught me and the teachers that taught you could not have taught you because they had to pass a test. Don't you think you're smart? Don't you think that you're intelligent? Don't you think that you learn from the several ways of learning? I would like to think so. Now, all of this is an economic mess that we're going through now, saying our children cannot learn. We have terrific teachers. We have terrific, we have a great superintendent of our schools. We have hard-working parents that are depending on us to do a good job. I volunteer. And another thing, and let me tell you this. I wondered why we weren't doing very well, and I went out to other school districts and worked. I've worked four school districts, and I retired from this one. I've worked about 40 years of my life, and I'm just 69. I finished high school before I was 17. I integrated these schools. Seventeen black kids in my high school. Ten black kids at my university. One of the first teachers to integrate Kansas City Missouri School District. And I wanted to go to all parts of this district, and thank God I did. I started at Manchester, Polish area, went to the West Side, and you know, I had everything there. Left the West Side, came to Leeds Dunbar. Left Leeds Dunbar, went to Northeast Junior. I've been everywhere except for Northeast Senior. I even went out there about Douglas Cemetery, where they call it Dog Patch. Come on, I know my children are okay. This is all a political game that we are playing. And stop putting it on testing. It's not testing. It is not testing, I tell you. And Colorado proved it. They're not playing that game anymore that we are playing. So let's stop playing with Kansas City School District people. Let's stop playing with Kansas City School Children. We're somebody, and we are no, we are somebody, and we don't have to play the color game. "Thank you," he says.
Thank you. Ann Pritchett. Ann, excuse me, Ann will be followed by Melissa Eddy and Anita Russell.
Good evening. My name is Ann Pritchett. I've been a teacher in the Kansas City Public Schools for 29 years. I'm a lifelong resident of the Kansas City area, and I would like to start by saying that I consider it an honor that the parents of my students have entrusted me to educate their children. I don't get to thank them publicly very often, so I wanted to bring that up. For 13 years, and I'm a special ed teacher, and for 13 of the years I've been in the district, I taught at McCoy Elementary, which is now closed. And at McCoy, we had complete wraparound services for every student. We had a fully-staffed health clinic. We had a dental clinic. We had a full-time social worker. We had several outreach workers who just helped us with various issues with our children. And the reason I bring all this up is because McCoy was the most successful school in the district at that time. We were the only school in the district for, I believe, seven or maybe eight years that made AYP every single year. Now, why did we do this? Because we met the needs of the children. So as you go through all these various plans and make your decision as a State Board, like Andrea said, we need to look at what's best for these kids. We know. We have a proven track record. McCoy was named a Gold Star School by the State of Missouri in 2001, and what that means is that we were designated as one of the top best 15 elementary schools in the state. And this was during a period when the district was unaccredited. McCoy served virtually the same population of children that all of our other schools served. We had the same high free lunch rate. We had the same minority rate. We had the same ELL rate, but yet we were able to do it. And it wasn't, I'd like to say that it was because of really good teachers like me, but I'm not going to go there. I think that we were able to do our job because we had the support that we needed. If a child came in my classroom in the morning and they were sick, there was a nurse practitioner right across the hall who could take care of him. If they didn't want to come to school because they were sick, we would tell them, "Come anyway, and we'll have the nurse practitioner look at you." She could write a prescription. We had outreach workers who could go pick up mom, take them to the pharmacy, pick up the prescription, come back to school, give the kid the medicine, they're back in class an hour later. These are the kind of programs we need. Why in the world this is being ignored? I think wraparound services has just been mentioned by some people as a, I don't know, it's a dangling carrot or what, but it really works, so please keep that in mind. I will testify to the fact that it works. The one other thing I wanted to say is the use of the term CEO is grossly offensive. Our children are not widgets. We're not making cars here. We're not manufacturing anything. We are educating our children. And how dare anyone come in and decide they want to be called a CEO? They can go work in the private business world and stay away from our children. Thank you.
Melissa Eddy and Anita Russell.
Are you Melissa? Oh, you're Anita. You're Melissa.
Good evening. As a parent of students who have attended the district for over 10 years, I come tonight with an open mind. I have not read the plans at length, and I wanted to hear what our district community members and parents thought about the plans. And I have to say that I am terribly disappointed in everyone who stands here defensive of this district. I, I cannot understand how they cannot see the numbers the way I see the numbers. If you have an average ACT score of 16 when you take Lincoln out of the equation, how is that acceptable? Our children are failing, Ms. Flinders. They are failing miserably. I agree with Ms. Saunders Brooks. We, it is criminal, the level of education our children have been getting. It's got to stop. Why are we defending the status quo? I am baffled. I need, I need to understand from our current leadership, why are they so afraid of losing local control that they will put the children at risk? Is it not about the children? At the end of the day, they have to be literate, productive members of our community, and our graduates are not. I cannot disagree with those comments earlier more. We do not graduate children who are able to go on to higher-level education and succeed in great numbers. It's on an exception basis, and that's wrong. I understand, and I hear comments tonight, people are afraid of disruption in their community schools. This is where their child goes to school every day. I'll tell you what's disruptive, is not having job skills. You're afraid of an inconvenience, of someone coming from the state to give you some direction. You know what's really inconvenient is being illiterate. I just, I have no patience for a discussion that suggests that our plan should ensure job security. And this is about the kids. This is about employing people who can get them where they need to go. And I'm disappointed that we continue to defend the status quo. I want to remind this district that everything that the superintendent has suggested are a track we have been down before. The superintendent wants to continue to use the state's advisors and the Regional Professional Development Team to assist them. We've done this since Tony Stansberry stepped on the stage back in the early 2000s. We've had the Regional Professional Development Team holding our hand for years. Where has it gotten us? I really can't see. I cannot see the progress that having that level of intervention has gotten us. Why would we keep doing it? Please, please, adopt a plan that proposes a real solution. You can embrace our current leadership and work with them, but please do not endorse the status quo. Thank you.
Anita Russell. Anita will be followed by Dorothy Curry and Beth Sarver.
Good evening. I'm Anita Russell. I'm president of the Kansas City, Missouri branch of the NAACP. And first of all, I want to say that we support high-quality public education. And also, we have been working with the Kansas City Public Schools, along with the coalition of other organizations. And we know that there is stability now, which hasn't, which there hasn't been. There is an elected board, and I, as Councilman Sharp mentioned that, that is working. There's been improvement, and there is a process in place. And we're not understanding all the rush to, because I believe there's a February 17 date to make a decision on all the plans, and I understand there are more plans even coming in. We're not understanding the rush to adopt a plan. So we think there doesn't need to be that rush, that we need to take time and really look at all these plans and make sure that what we do, we do for the children. And you know, everybody says it's good for the children, but a lot of times, we don't operate that way. So we are really asking that the Board, State Board of Education, take the time, look through these plans before they make a decision, and not rush to a decision by February the 17th, I believe it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy Curry, followed by Beth Sarver, followed by Luenta Etier.
Thank you very much. My name is Dorothy Curry. I'm a graduate of the Kansas City, Missouri Public Schools. My children attended the Kansas City, Missouri Public Schools, and I volunteer in a public school, the Banneker School, right now. I live one block into Kansas, but I happen to care very, very much about the children in Kansas City, Missouri, particularly those most at risk. I know something about school funding. I know something about administrators and teachers' efforts to help children become educated and also to teach to tests. When children come to kindergarten, the ones I'm familiar with mostly are two years behind. People believe that two years can be made up. It can be made up, some people think in six months, some in a year, some in two years, some in four years. Think about this. If children can make up for what they were not prepared for, if they can make up two years in a year, what are we doing wrong with the children who were ready for school? Why are not, why are they not advancing so much faster? This is a lot of hard work on the part of educators, and there are lots of things to be learned if people from a great distance from our schools would come and experience what is going on in the classrooms with the teachers. I took some time to read the C-Trust I took some time to read the C-Trust proposal today. It's very long. It's interesting. I have not met the devil incarnate. I think that everyone, everyone wants better for the children. But I would have these questions about that plan. One is that it says again and again that the administrator of this school will have $10,000 per child, and that previously, as it was said, they only had five percent of the money for the school discretionary. And a lot of principals today would think that $10,000 for a child is a lot of money. Well, I think that also in that $10,000 is the maintenance of those big buildings. I'm not sure about that. These are questions I have. But I'm telling you that I know that if you give them $14,000 for each child, that the wraparound support services for the children who are most at risk will not be accomplished with $14,000, let alone $10,000. So, it would look good to someone, and someone would vote in favor of that kind of thing, that sort of autonomy. It would, it's, educators should be in charge of the education for the children. This is true. And, and this plan offers that in a small community of an individual school. But be careful. Be careful about what is chosen and whether or not it will meet the needs of the children. I just so wish that people at a distance would come and see and experience. The children can learn, but also, tests show, tests, tests demonstrate skill development, fact gathering, but that's not education. Thank you very much. You, you've got something very precious to consider, and make sure that, that you give all your good inputs so that the best is chosen.
Beth Sarver.
I feel so blessed that I got to come up here tonight. I was praying that I would, and I'm so amazed by the abundance in this city. I've been looking at this issue for the past couple of years from a unique perspective as a non-traditional educator. Currently, I am the Trauma Outreach Coordinator for Truman Behavioral Health, and I come here tonight to share with you the research that I've done on the Trauma Sensitive Schools Initiative that's happening around the country, and that I and my team at Truman have been collaborating with the district, with Dr. Green and his team, to embed into our district. And so, the, the key piece of information that we seek to, to bring into the schools is really understanding how the brain works. That's the first piece. Understanding a basic level of brain science, and then understanding the prevalence of trauma in our communities. We talk about at-risk, well, that means something, something really big. The prevalence of trauma in urban schools and urban communities is startling. And if you haven't seen the ACE study, it was done many years ago. It's just been redone in Philadelphia. They actually did an urban ACE study, and the results are startling. The issue that we have here is not that we don't have kids that can learn, and not that we don't, and that we don't have teachers that can teach. We have trauma that is disrupting on a physiological level, the brain activity of every human being in the system. That includes the children, the teachers, the administrators, the community, the parents, everyone. And when we shame people, when we shame children, when we shame teachers, when we shame parents, when we shame administrators, we shut down the brain. And that, the prefrontal cortex, this part of your brain, that's the part where you can access deep understanding and cognition, which is what we're seeking to do with our kids in learning. But when we have this gloom and doom cloud that I, I believe that this effort has put over the district, we're not just shutting down the, the brains of children, we're shutting down the, the best thinking of, of all of us, you know? We've talked about the fact that people have stopped investing in the district. We've lost hope in the district. But I have so much hope, because I've been watching. We have an amazing ecosystem for the renaissance of this district here in Kansas City. We have everything that we need, but we need to stop shaming. Anybody that you would think deserves shame, we need to stop, because that's not helping. We have creative solutions. We have mental health systems that are ready, willing, and able to engage in the wraparound. We have nonprofits. We have entrepreneurs. We have an amazing art community. This city has abundance. And, and I truly believe that the, the status quo, it does include trauma-informed care. And there were several bullets that were not included on the superintendent's plan here. If you go to the website, you will find trauma-informed care. You will find an extensive list of professional developments, because our teachers need support. But they also need the principles of trauma-informed care. I'll tell you very quickly. Safety. Physical and psychological safety for all people, not just the kids, the teachers too, and the administrators, which means being free of shame. Trustworthiness. Trusting that consistency will be present. Choice. Collaboration. Empowerment. Peer engagement. Resilience. We have to learn how to develop the resilience of our communities. And these are all facets of the work that we can do together, that we are doing. We're currently doing this work. And so, I just urge you to not, I don't know where you got information for this slideshow, but you've missed a lot about the superintendent's plan. And it's on the website. I actually pulled it up on my phone. But trauma-informed care is a piece. If you go to traumasesensitiveschools.org, there is an extensive, two-volume tool called Helping Traumatized Children Learn, and it includes promoting resilience and self-care for all of the professionals in the system, so that they're able to serve this really complex community of human beings.
Luentha. There's Luentha here. And she will be followed by our last presenter of the evening, Lynette Smith.
Good evening, everyone. I am a bit concerned that the teachers seem to be the only one that are responsible for the test scores, test scores of the students. They're not getting enough support. They have to handle behavior issues along with trying to make sure that the students can learn, and we're not doing enough to support that effort. So that's my concern. Who else is responsible for the test scores besides the teachers? That's all I have to say.
Our last speaker will be Lynette Smith.
Hello, all. I'm a parent of the Kansas City Public School District. I have two sons at African Center College Prep. I attended the Kansas City Public School District during the Magnet Schools. I do, I am a parent of four charter school students and a homeschool parent. I have six children. Here's the one thing I'm going to say. We can look a lot on the past, and we could talk about what happened in the past, we could talk about the revolving door. The issue is, right now, we have a board, and the board presented a plan when C-Trust came out with their plan. Now, I do not advocate you all coming in and just completely destroying the district based off of what C-Trust, but I agree, something has to be done, and this status quo does not work. Everyone who got up here and spoke and said the district was a great district and everything's going great, their kids went to Lincoln. Who doesn't succeed at Lincoln? Who doesn't succeed at Lincoln? Come walk in AC Prep doors. In AC Prep's doors, we have an awesome principal named Dr. Carl Robinson. He was given the, the task of bringing children up to par. You have to implement intervention services with no budget. You have to get creative and try to get volunteers to come in and help these kids get up to task. I see all these people in the room, but when you know that there are schools who need, like AC Prep, like Martin Luther King, like Central, everybody can run and flock to Paseo and Lincoln because that is the safe place to be. But nobody wants to go in there where the parents and the teachers and the administrators have to tell the kids every day, "Pull up your pants, please." Where they, where they have issues, where the security guards are having to pull mace on kids, but not because the kids are violent or angry, but because they are frustrated with their level of education. To me, $4 million on nineteen people, that does not include their benefit package, that's too much money when a school asks for a band instructor so our worldwide nationally-known band can travel, and we can't even get $9,000. $300,000 to send lobbyists down to Desi. $300,000, and we couldn't get $9,000. I'm going to tell you what the problem with the district is. School districts need to equip schools for academic intervention, principal, teacher, and parent support. I said, "principal, teacher, and parent support." Do not send any more money down to Desi. We don't need no more people down there. Principals should be allocated a larger budget than what they're given. I saw the pad for AC Prep's 2013, 2014 school year. It was laughable. You couldn't even really hire a parent liaison, which we don't have. Any plan implemented for the Kansas City Public Schools should be modeled after successful programs that have dealt with children. And I, I resent when they say "at risk," because my children attend KTPS. And, and I live on, I tell everybody, 69th Paseo, I ran for school board, people should know that. And my family is not at risk. We're actually above the poverty level. But when my son comes home and says, "Mama, they want us to do work. We're college prep, but they won't give us a lesson plan or a syllabus." All of us who have attended college, raise your hand. When you walked in there, did they, or did they not hand you a syllabus so you knew when your assignments were due? There was no excuse. I had a professor who talked about her grandkids all day long, but she still wanted our assignments. We need to make sure that the communication, the district newsletter, anyone you bring in must have constant communication with the parents. We have Twitter, Facebook, Instagram. We need to have it all, because communication is not there. Not only that, but whoever you bring in, there needs to be a serious, serious accountability, not just reporting to you once a month what they're doing, but data-driven, month-to-month accountability. I've heard, I've, I've read all these plans up here. A lot of them are good, but they're still missing the serious things. When they said quote-unquote "wraparound services," that's things that suburban schools have. They have nurses. They have counselors. These are things that our schools are missing. We need that. So whoever you decide on, if you decide to go with your own plan, I will say this, stick with the superintendent that we have. You might want to do something with the board. Stick with the superintendent that we have.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for coming tonight, and I would ask you to please continue to give us your feedback. As was mentioned earlier, we will be putting together our plan and taking that to the State Board of Education on February the eighteenth for their discussion. I also would like to thank Dr. Green and the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Education for the use of this fine facility and for all their help and support this evening. Please drive safely.